This meeting of the guests in City Council now called and come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
President Echols is absent today and the meeting is being chaired by our President Pro Tem Cannon. Councilman Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. Councilman Williams will lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to convene today. Father, we thank you for those who are in attendance. Father, we thank you for the business that is before us, Father, and we thank you in advance for the wisdom that you will impart, Father God, to ensure that we manage both our resources, our people, and our opportunities effectively, Father. And through it all, Father, we ask that you will continue to bless this great city and the people that live within it, for it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to apologize for my folk today as leaving me, but we're going to get through this, I promise. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in Council Meeting on February the fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Number six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the week of February the tenth through the sixteenth and the seventeenth through the twenty-third.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for both weeks.
I don't see the mayor today, so I guess we don't have any proclamations today.
We do.
You think we do?
We do.
Yeah, we got one proclamation.
I guess we'll just have to wait on the comeback down here, we'll do it at the end. We're pleased to have Gaston City High School student Chelsea James with us today. Chelsea wrote the winning essay in the school's contest regarding Black History Month. Mr. Blackwell, Principal of Gaston City School, Ms. Chelsea, would you please come up?
I want to thank the members of the council and Ms. Nelson as well for allowing us to do this as a reward to Ms. James for this contest. So gentlemen, thank you for letting us have this honor. We had a contest, it was our Black History, during Black History Month, for an essay, for a short essay, that the students, if they won, or the students that won, will be able to come to the council as a reward, to be able to recite this in front of you guys and as well, we know that it'd be on TV. Had countless entries, we broke it down into different teachers, different administrators, looking over, picking the few that would move on to the next stage. And I don't have Ms. Katie here, some of you may know Ms. Katie, she's our current teacher, she has a torn ligament in her foot, so she's having trouble getting around, so she's not here, but she helped tremendously, along with Ms. Howard, I don't know if you know Ms. Howard, that she helped as well. And Ms. James came out as our winner. You know, there were several different teachers that looked at it, you know, it was kind of a, you don't know whose name it was, so there wouldn't be any type of opinion on who the student was, so it was kind of anonymous until the end, you read the names. So Ms. James was our winner, and I could stand here and give you all kind of accolades for Ms. James. And some of you already know her, she is an outstanding student, and she's already a little bit nervous as it is, so I don't want to carry on about her and make it even worse than what it is. But once again, I do thank you for allowing us the time, and at this time, I'll let Ms. James read her essay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Chelsea James, and I'll be reading my essay on what Black History Month means to me. Today's society should not only celebrate the African-American heroes in the month of February, but they should also remember them year-round. Black History Month gives people the chance to reflect on African-American inventors, activists, slaves, and even athletes. But to me, it is a month to recognize the brilliance of the African-American race and makes me proud to be an African-American woman. Black History Month covers three main topics: motivation, determination, and the final destination. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. proved to be a zealous motivational speaker for African-Americans. Even though he has passed, his message still lives on. Every February, people are realizing what have known all of long, that the promotion of African-Americans is highly important, and our ancestors have made a terrific difference in this country. With the strong will of African-American people, conquering feats such as coming out of slavery, earning the right to vote, and fighting for civil rights have created solid foundations to build an ongoing legacy for the future. And so, even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day, this nation will rise up and live out the meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. This excerpt from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech persuaded the African-American people to have faith even in the worst of times. Dr. King motivated blacks to perform peaceful protests for civil rights, and as a result of this, success came slowly as a victory to the African-American people. Today, Dr. King is praised for the series of peaceful marches, boycotts, and other feats in order to gain civil rights for African-Americans, motivating the new generation to look at trials from a peaceful standpoint. To me, he symbolizes the struggle of a Christian trying to follow what is right by refusing to conform to the world around him. Without this boost of motivation, there's no telling what would have become of African-Americans during this time period. With motivation comes determination to finish out what one has started, and Nelson Mandela is the perfect depiction of a determined leader for the African-American people. I am fundamentally an optimist. Whether that comes from nature or nurture, I cannot say. Part of being optimistic is keeping one's head pointed toward the sun, one's feet moving forward. There were many dark moments when my faith in humanity was sorely tested, but I would not and could not give myself up to despair. That way lays defeat and death. This famous quote by Nelson Mandela shows the determined attitude he had about changing the world. Mandela showed the world that patience and determination are required for many situations in life. Without determination, nothing would get done efficiently, and the effectiveness that determination has had on the African-American population is shown through our current President, Barack Obama. The final destination for success ends with fulfilling one's true purpose in life. President Barack Obama is the opening chapter of the final destination. He went into the presidential race with the motivation to change the way America was operating, determination to win the race, and improve the American way of life, and his final destination is to get everyone to see the boundless opportunities waiting to be taken by expanding the knowledge, health, and sensitivity of all Americans. Focusing your life solely on making a buck shows a certain poverty of ambition. It adds too little of yourself, because it's only when you hitch your wagon to something larger than yourself that you realize your true potential. This quote by Obama proves once again that involving oneself in something that affects numerous people shows one's true zeal for life and purpose. To sum up my thoughts, the motivation sparked by Martin Luther King Jr. showed African-Americans that we are worth more than the treatment of second-class citizens. The determination of Nelson Mandela proved no feat is great enough to quit. The opening of the final destination by President Barack Obama expresses the intensity of African-Americans to become a defining factor in America. Black History Month shows everyone the impact that African-American leaders have on America. To those who already know, it stands as a reminder of who African-Americans are and foreshadows that there is only more history to come. Thank you.
Thank you, that was very...
I can see why she won.
Very emotional to us there, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything?
No, Shane is...
Okay, Shane, you have a proclamation for the mayor? We can do it now, if you will.
Lisa Boyd and Terry Ray? Or... Come on, come on. Are you Lisa? Okay. Lisa, on behalf of the mayor, I'll present this proclamation. Whereas colorectal cancer is the third-leading cause of death from cancer in the United States for both men and women, and is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer in the United States, it is estimated that there are 2,540 new cases for colorectal cancer in the state of Alabama in 2012. It is important for the public to understand that colorectal cancer is preventable, treatable, and beatable in most cases if detected early. And whereas more than 145,000 people in the United States are diagnosed with colorectal cancer each year, and approximately 50,000 die, and whereas the vast majority of colon cancer deaths can be prevented through proper screening and early detection, and whereas the survival rate of individuals who have colorectal cancer is 90% when detected in the early stages versus only a 10% survival rate when colorectal cancer is diagnosed after it has spread to other organs, this cancer can be prevented nine out of 10 times through early detection with proper screening. And whereas of the 51,690 people expected to die of colorectal cancers in 2012, early detection could save more than half, and whereas regular colorectal cancer screening has been ranked as one of the most cost-effective screening interventions available with the potential to save 40,000 lives a year, whereas if the majority of people in the United States age 50 or older were screened regularly for colorectal cancer, the death rate from the disease could significantly decrease. And whereas colonoscopy is considered the gold standard of screening methods for its ability to view the entire colon and both detect and remove polyps during the same procedure. And whereas greater awareness of this cancer and the means to prevent it could save the lives of hundreds of people each year. And whereas observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of early detection and screening. Now, therefore, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gaston, Alabama, does hereby proclaim March 2012 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. I'll present this.
We'd just like to thank the mayor and the councilmen, and we just, you know, want to get the word out, early detection is key, and the gold standard, as he said, is colonoscopy. So for ages 40 and above, the literature says 50 and above, but for ages 40 and above, or if you have a family history, we'd just like to encourage you to have your colonoscopy, it could just save your life. Thank you.
Number nine, unfinished business. A is an ordinance amending fiscal year budget 2012. The ordinance was presented for the first reading on February the fourteenth. It transfers remaining balance of $2,500 from the police equipment trust fund to help pay for items recently recommended by the Public Safety Committee. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 10, this is time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 904 Wilson Avenue in District Two. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Willard Dean G. Mays, and LaSalle Bank National Association. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in March of 2010, there've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 310 Bryan Street in District Six. The last known owners are Joene Smith Estate, Marvin Smith, Johnny Edward Lipskin, Alan Biggar, Christopher Gregory Honeycutt, and Nina Parrish. Is anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a mobile home, we've actually had two different cases on this, one back in 2008, and then the current case was reopened in January 2010. The last building permit was February of 2009, there've been no improvements to the property, we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Are there any discussions? I think we'll see, Mr. Harbison talked with us about this one, that this has been ongoing for at least four years, so I just want to let you know that's why we was doing this. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2100 A Sansom Avenue. This is a garage apartment in District Six. The last known owners are Wells Fargo Bank, National Association, and Wayne Grissom. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in February of last year, there've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thirteen through twenty, this is time and place as advertised to conduct public hearings, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement lien against property. This is for grass cutting that has already been performed, and we have eight locations. I'm going to read the locations and the name and addresses, and anyone who would like to speak about any of these may come forward. 306 Augusta Streak, District One, $781, State of Alabama, Property Tax Division, Sherwood Edwards, Brogdon. 302 Carolyn Lane in District Two, $211, Marilyn A. Woods. 716 North Tenth Street in District Three, $271, Nash Flucker. Ayers Co., Grace M. Harris. 357 Albert Raines Boulevard in District Three, $406, Britain Oil Company. 1412 Hill Avenue in District Three, $331, State of Alabama, Property Tax Division, Jennifer Jordan, in care of Jennifer Lee. 104 Penn Drive, District Four, $151, James E. and Katrina J. Spade, in care of Lawanda 1116 South 11th Street in District Five, $166, Randy and Bobby Higgins. And the last one's 1214 Jupiter Street in District Five, $151, Matthew C. Thomas. Is there anyone out there who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all eight resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt all eight resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all eight.
The next one's a resolution approving advance for travel expenses of $380.30 each to Councilman Billy Harris, Robert Avery, and Bill Stewart to attend the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt these resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next two are resolutions authorizing application and acceptance of grants from Edwok County Community Development Committee. The city is requesting $60,000 for a water line extension project and $32,000 for a sanitary sewer extension project in Lookout Mountain. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt both resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Can I make the amendment now, Ben, to get her up of it? Oh, no. Oh, okay. I don't owe money that word.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with Adam Walden to entertain a smoke on the files on Friday, April 13th. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing corporate agreement for preparation of a stormwater management plan. The city has contracted with Essent ME to update the existing plans, and this will share the cost of the work with the county and other municipalities in the county, according to population. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Chad, you said, where are we on this?
Everybody is joined on it, so for the city of Etala, they are scheduled to vote on it next week in their council meeting.
Okay, so all everybody except Etala?
Yes, sir.
Etala being on board this next week, correct?
That is our indication, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
That brings us...
Just want to be sure.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's new business. Is there any new business today?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution authorizing a license agreement with the Chamber for River Fest. The River Fest is going to be held on June the eighth through the tenth, so this is...
Second.
...a license agreement with the Chamber.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now...
I'll ask for approval, please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
What's the date on that again?
June the eighth through the tenth. Of course, they're lining up the entertainment, it's going to be another big event for our city.
Are you going to perform this time, or...
Not till I get my eyes fixed.
Oh, okay, all right. I was wondering, okay. Fall off stage.
If there's no more discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
I'm going to participate, but I'm not going to...
Okay, all right.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business, any more new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a legal document number 2012. It's a resolution authorizing bid to auto-link services for assistive listening devices in the amount of $12,640.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second. Are there any discussion?
Yes, this is the purchase of listening devices for those who have somewhat, who are somewhat hearing impaired, to go into four city facilities here to assist those people who have a problem hearing. And they will be accommodating to anyone who has a problem based on the number of people who, as a percentage of the number of people that can occupy that building at that time.
What did you say?
I don't believe I can say it again, Ben.
We will have one for the council chamber bill, so you'll be able to hear the next one. The four buildings, I can't remember, it was the council chamber...
Convention Hall, Senior Citizens Building...
A at Communion Center.
And Elliott, okay, those are four, okay. Four percent.
Four percent of the population of those...
Four percent of the capacity.
...of the capacity of those buildings.
Are there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items. First one I'd like to bring up is an ordinance authorizing amendment to the fiscal year 2011 CDBG budget by adding $16,000 to housing from unprogrammed funds. I'd like to make a motion that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is essentially a budgetary move or an amendment to draft $16,000, as I mentioned earlier, from the line item of unprogrammed funds into housing.
You know, we had some, and I see some people in the audience who had some, a gentleman come and speak to us upstairs about a program I mentioned as far as assisting people in businesses and whatever. We just took $16,000 out of unprogrammed funds. I'm not sure what unprogrammed funds are or how much we got in there. But I think there's going to be an opportunity for us to assist entrepreneurs, small businesses to go into business in designated areas. I'm hoping that the Community Development Committee is going to take this up pretty soon. And the reason I bring this up today is because I said we had somebody upstairs, and I see one or two entrepreneurs in the audience, a young lady I ran into last night who talked about her boutique, opening up her boutique downtown. And those are the type of things that we need to be pushing, small businesses, and we can do that with community development funds, along with dealing with our major banks. There seems to be some concern that banks won't participate, and that's not true. Everywhere I go, I've gone around this country dealing with community development funds and cities and small businesses and banks, and they do participate. You've just got to want to do the program. And for some reason or another, we have a mental block when it comes down to doing that type of program. Upstairs, we were told about loans that had failed, and then it was reminded about loans that were good. I think the rate of loans that are bad in most communities and most programs like this is somewhere in the neighborhood of 1% to 2%, which is a lot less than what banks and lending institutions have in their portfolio for other type loans. So I think it's a great program, and I hope this council will strongly, strongly consider looking at that over the next few months, and I'll get off my soapbox now so we can deal with this.
I think the community probably, Derek, needs to find out how much money is in that fund, and before we meet again, that way we'll know where we are, how much is in it, because I don't know, do you know?
No, not on... Usually, he sets aside some undesignated fund in his budget, it's usually not much, somewhere, I think, a year last year, it might have been $50,000.
You miss where this money's coming from. It's not coming from undesignated funds or special funds, it says from unprogrammed funds, which is a totally different...
That was his set aside money, we called it discretionary. That was his set aside money, whether he called it discretionary or undesignated or what it is, but...
Let me put it...
Money he didn't obligate to anything.
Let me put it this way, as Chairman of the Finance Committee, we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that department that we could use if we wanted to, and I'm through with that. Moving right on.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I would encourage anybody before we schedule a meeting, I'd like to encourage any council members who have an idea of some of the pertinent decision makers that need to be at that meeting to definitely be there, because that's going to be as important as identifying the source of the funding, so do want to make mention of that.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have three other items here, but they're all relative to the same project, so I will raise them together. We have a resolution authorizing agreement with Aldat for installation and maintenance of traffic control signals and or roadway lighting along US four eleven. And it's the four lane from Gaston to Turkey Town. This is the existing corridor. We also have a resolution authorizing agreement with Aldat for the city assuming maintenance of that same portion of US four eleven. And of course, we have a resolution regarding Aldat giving them authorization to proceed with the bypass project. So I make a motion that we consider all three of these today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider all three resolutions today, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion, or you want to tell everybody what this is all about?
Yeah, so most people in the city are aware that there, for a long time, there's been work on and an effort to complete the US four eleven bypass project. And obviously, because we don't have a transportation bill in Washington and a number of issues, most of the high priority projects have received the attention from Aldat, which you fully expect that. So with that being said, us having a functional, existing four eleven, Highway four eleven from Gaston to Turkey Town, pretty much did not make us a high priority on that list. Well, you know, now that we've had the opportunity to get some folks here to look at our project and realize that there've been a number of resources already assigned to that project, we've gained some momentum, and it's actually due to be bid. The paving is actually due to be bid here on March thirtieth, I believe. So there's a lot of momentum and activity relative to this project, and these resolutions that we've read today and that we're voting on today are important to us proceeding with these projects. So also, the county will also be required to sign off on municipal agreements as well relative to that project because a portion of four eleven obviously extends into the county. So again, we're excited about this, but there's still a lot of work ahead.
Also too, David, we've talked before, J.R. Countryman, Councilman Countryman, he was up here with us before when all this took effect, and he was really instrumental in trying to get this road and this highway through there. And we talked about trying to get that highway part of it or something right in their name for him. So I think we need to try to go ahead with that some way if we can, also, Ms. Iverson.
I thought it was already J.R. Countryman Memorial Parkway. I thought that was the name of it.
I'm going to tell you what, they said he was...
It's not official.
He was instrumental in it, Robert, but I'm going to tell you what, he was the driving force behind it, period.
That's why I said I thought it was already named.
I mean, he really got after that project and pushed and pushed and pushed and made sure it's where it is today.
Absolutely.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item of new business I'd like to bring up at this time, and this is a resolution authorizing satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien at eleven eighteen Chor Street. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'd ask for passage at this time.
Second. Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, this is authorizing satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien at property at eleven eighteen Chor Street to Thomasino Brown, who lives next door to this lot. This is one, I think, where we tore a house down. We've been cutting grass and doing a bunch of other things. So now we're going to get it back on the tax road, and then we don't have to worry about cutting the grass anymore.
And the money's in the vault.
That's right, the check is in the vault.
Any more discussion? Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any further new business? That brings us down to citizens' requests. We got Mark Ragby, the stage drummer at Wallace Hall, is he here?
Yep. He just came in.
He'll come to the mic, please, and give your clerk their name and address, please. You've got five minutes. Just right here.
Bye, Coach.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Mark Ragby. I'm actually a resident of Birmingham, Alabama. I am actually here this morning to talk about a production that I'm bringing to the great city of Gaston. We will be at Wallace Hall on fourth, March fourth. On March fourth, that's this Sunday, I'm presenting a stage play called Baby Ain't No Way. Many of you might be familiar with Tyler Perry or the John Rub Theater that he produces. And so this is kind of, sort of, in the same spirit of the Tyler Perry productions. But what we're doing is we're tackling a couple of issues, and one of them being child abuse in the show. And so this is a production that is near and dear to me. I'm hoping that all of you will attend. In fact, we are going to leave your names at will call so you can see the show.
Alright.
For free, amen. The other thing I wanted to do this morning was present each of you guys with a copy of my book. It's called Even Me Maintaining Faith in Uncertain Times, alright? My mom said that the best way to be hospitable is you bring gifts. So I'm bringing gifts. But if you guys could help me in getting the word out about the production, one of the things that I've heard since I've been here is that you guys are looking for new entertainment and new ventures. And so I'm excited about being a part of that. And so so far, I've had the opportunity to converse with Mr. Avery and Mr. Williams, and they've shown me a whole lot of love. So I really do appreciate it, gentlemen, thank you so much. Again, it's Sunday, seven o'clock, Wallace Hall, Baby Ain't No Way. We're bringing in the Grammy nominated Tony Terry to the great city of Gaston. He'll be a part of the production. And there's also a gentleman named Gary Jenkins. He's a part of the R and B group Silk. And so we're going to have a really great time. I think the show is family friendly, but I have suggested that if you have kids under twelve, leave them at home. Especially the ones that cry. Leave those at home, too. No, but the reason being is, when I say we take on the issue of child abuse, we take on the issue of child abuse in the show. And so you'll laugh, you'll probably cry, and you'll definitely be well entertained with the production. This is seven years of producing my own theater and sixteen years in theater. And so I'm excited because this is the first stop for me in the state of Alabama is coming to see you guys. I also must, 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 must give a shout out to New Destiny Church. They were so warm to me on Sunday and helping to get the word out. So thank you guys so, so much. Yes, sir.
You've had another production here.
I did, I actually...
And it was a great, yeah.
It was.
It was a great production.
I don't know if I should mention it, because I don't know if it was in Gas and City Limits. I'm a little nervous. We actually went over to Center Stage, maybe two years ago. We brought a show called He's Not the Man I Married. And the turnout was really, really good, you know. I can come up with probably about a zillion more of those titles. But they say that behind every great man is a great woman. And so actually, my administrator journeyed with me this morning. So if I can shout her out her name, it's Miss Kim Chapman. And I appreciate her joining me this morning.
Hello, Ms. Chapman, so we can see you back there.
And we're on a push this week. I'm on a go. Maybe I won't sell out Wallace Hall, but I'm surely going to try, alright? So thank you guys so much for giving me the opportunity to share with you guys. And if I could, I'll...
And thank you for bringing your production to Gaston.
Thank you, sir.
I would suggest that you might contact the radio station. We have some talk shows that are always glad to have guests come on and...
Okay.
I think we've...
Push through the radio.
We hooked them up with one, I think we're trying to hook them up with another one, but we're working on it.
Yep, I'm in the front row, you'll see too, I'm not there.
Alright. Well, I'll definitely see you guys before I leave. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us down to remarks by the mayor and council. Ms. Councilman Hess, would you like to go first?
Yes, I'll go first. You know, we had mentioned of J.R. Countryman being very tenacious, you know, about four eleven. And we're about to see the fruits of all his labor there. And I wish, I wish we could have the same success on seven fifty-nine that we are about to realize on four eleven. I can promise you that we, your city council, you know, is striving very hard, very hard, to get something done about the extension of seven fifty-nine. But you know, it's like Councilman Williams said, the federal government is not going to release any monies for us to do these projects. So we will have an opportunity in about two weeks to beg and plead again our representatives in Washington, DC, to let them know how important that little project is to us here in the city of Gaston. So every time you have an opportunity to impress upon someone how greatly needed that bypass is, take advantage of it. Because we certainly need that extension done. And that's all I have.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just kind of along the same vein relative to four eleven. You know, we definitely appreciate former Councilman Countryman's contribution to that effort. He was a strong advocate for that project. You know, administratively, I think that process frustrated him a great deal because he didn't always understand how some of those things should happen. And we were, Chad and I were very fortunate to gain some favor with Aldat as it relates to that process, and we were able to leverage a couple of relationships. And so we appreciate the support that we've gotten for Aldat. And we appreciate them recognizing, again, that, you know, we were about to let the weeds take over that project. And so thank them for understanding that and thank them for stepping up and letting us proceed with that four eleven project. Now, the challenge that remains is what do you do with the existing corridor? That's going to essentially turn into a very long street. So I think it was determined that that is roughly a couple miles, was it, Chad? So we are going to get, the state of Alabama has signed on to pave it one last time for us, resurface it one last time, and then it's going to be our responsibility going forward. So I'm sure glad this is on television, because I don't want folks to act surprised several years down the road when we're having to fight that battle of paving and finding funds to pave that very long stretch of highway there. But again, nevertheless, we're excited about what's happening now. We also have a very real challenge, I asked our city planner to really pay close attention to this. We have a very real challenge to try to figure out what we're going to do from a commercial standpoint with that existing four eleven corridor. Because now that your traffic's being rerouted, you've got some real opportunities to draw businesses there, more specifically, small businesses. So let's please devote some energies to doing some municipal planning there to make sure that we don't miss out on some opportunities. Couple of other things before I end. You know, many of you've heard in the news, and you've heard it reported regarding the mental health hospital closures that are taking place and how some of that activity is going to be pushed back to the cities. Gaston's not going to be exempt from that. And I do want folks to know and understand that we're in the process now of planning and trying to be strategic about how we're going to manage that. We've got some subject matter experts from the city of Gaston that are actually going to be in Montgomery this week proposing a plan and developing countermeasures for how we're going to manage the influx or the potential influx of patients into our community. So those folks who have a serious concern about how that's going to play out in the city, just know that the mayor's fully aware of it, this council's aware, and again, the subject matter experts in that area are in Montgomery representing our interest. So we'll have more to report on that as that whole issue progresses. And I think that's it for today.
Councilman Avery?
I'm glad you brought that up. I will be in Montgomery tomorrow on that subject matter. So hopefully, we can come back with some good news. I wanted to address the young lady who won the essay. It was a beautiful job, and I can understand how and why she won based on what she read here today. She's gone now, although she had to get back to school. But there was one thing I wanted to correct her on. She talked about how much Dr. King influenced and helped blacks and African Americans. Dr. King also helped whites. And you know, sometime we soon forget that, or we don't talk about it for some reason or another, I'm not sure why. But I can remember, you know, back in the sixties, when there were certain jobs that black folks couldn't have, or they were designated as such. But there were also some hangups and some limits to certain white people as to what they could do. You know, and I hear the mayor always talk about the linchheads from Alabama City. You know, they were limited in a lot of times and a lot of places as to where they could go and what they could do. Maybe it was economically, but at least they was limited. And then when integration came about, then that kind of opened up things for a lot of us. A few years back, prior to that, females could even vote, whether you were black or white. So there's a lot of things that have changed over, less than the last hundred years. And so hopefully, we're not going back to that. And that's what brings me to this subject. You know, we've got to be very, very careful. We've got people now who, under the disguise of religion and under the disguise of trying to protect jobs in the state of Alabama, are now imposing rules and regulations that I think are going to be very, very dangerous in the future if we don't be careful and if we don't watch them. That group that's in Montgomery now saying that immigration is creating, I mean, the law that they passed is creating jobs in Alabama. But it's also creating profiling. It's created lines at the county, if any of you all have tried to go buy your tag here lately, for you. Because if you don't have the proper ID and the name on the registration is yours and your husband, or your husband and somebody else, or whoever, you've got to have all that ID with you. You just can't go up and buy a tag like you used to. And that's because of those, I mean, those folks in Montgomery who imposed this crazy law. And it's just a matter of time before, and you've got to have voter's ID now. That's another thing, too, that's crazy. It's a poll tax for poor people who can't afford to go and spend twenty bucks on a photo ID. They don't have driver's license, particularly elderly. And so it's a matter of time before they come back and say you got to own property, like they used to, before you can vote. And you got to own property other than your house before you can vote. So ladies and gentlemen, let's think about this, and let's be careful, and let's get those folks in Montgomery in check. Because if you don't, we're going to be headed back to where we used to be. I don't think Dr. King would stand by and let some of these things that are happening today happen, because he understands what can happen when people like that go unchecked. I'm off my soapbox, that's all I...
Okay, I can get on mine now then, since the mayor's not here, and you called the mayor a linchhead. Basically, that's what you did, correct?
Well, yeah, that's what he said.
Now, let me finish, let me finish.
That's what he said.
The mayor's not the only linchhead up on this council right here.
I forgot.
I've been a linchhead, lived in Alabama City for fifty-three years, and I am totally proud to be a linchhead, come whatever you want to. I am totally proud to live over there. And I had to get on Robert about that, but I am totally one-hundred percent committed to Alabama City, and I'm totally a linchhead.
And doing a great job at it, too.
Right. Councilman Stewart?
I'm not going to go there. I would like to congratulate Ms. James on her winning that essay. She did a beautiful job. And of course, it makes all of us proud to see... Of course, it makes all of us proud to see one of our students from our school excel like that. I wouldn't be surprised if we don't read a novel by Ms. James someday. Outstanding young lady. That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I did wanna recognize Mr. Tom McKenzie. Is in the audience, or did he leave?
He left.
Well, I'll be, he was scared to death I was gonna tell everybody it was his birthday today. And he got up and left. And I'm gonna tell you how old he is, but I think that's what scared him. He thought I was gonna do it.
Can I interrupt you and say something about Tom that I think is real fascinating most people don't know?
I got it down. Go.
You wanna tell it?
No, you know, you go, and I back you. Go, go.
If you've ever heard of Casey Jones, the railroad man, I'm sure some of our older people have. Well, Tom is Casey Jones' grandson.
He sure is.
Which is, I thought, a very unique thing.
Yeah, and that's the other reason I wanted to keep him here, you know, so we could say that to him.
Embarrassing?
Well, it, well, I don't know why it embarrassed him. I think the age limit is what really got him off to a bad start. But anyway, that's just part of that. And on that line, I truly, I'm gonna make a public statement. I disavow any liability on your eye surgery. I want that known, that I totally disavow. And I want you to know something else.
You got a referral fee, and... And I, he encouraged me to have some cataract surgery, and I'm blind as a bat. Hold your responsibility.
Well, I want you to know that remuneration was in cash. No way to prove that. Oh, mate. This morning, I do wanna thank some people. Chief Roy Harbin and Lieutenant Fake Gary, Gary, and the Special Programs Team and the Building Department also for the work the past week that we've gone through. Neighborhood watch is one of the most important things that I can think of in a neighborhood when we watch out for each other and we cooperate with the police force. And fortunately, this week that happened, and I wanna commend the police force again and the Special Programs Unit and the neighbors in the neighborhood. They came together through total cooperation with them and brought a situation to an end. And for that, I do appreciate them greatly.
Mr. President, I have one other thing.
Okay.
I appreciate Ben bringing that back to my attention. I have a problem. Well, they say you always got a problem, but it's a serious problem. I wanna know how many council members knew before ten o'clock yesterday morning that we were gonna be interviewing for the police chief?
All I know is what I read in the paper. Who said that?
I don't know. Did you read it in the paper?
Will Rogers said something similar to that.
He's the guy who quoted that.
Did you, did you read it in the paper?
I did read it in the paper.
In Saturday's paper?
I don't remember what paper it was, but it was several days ago that they were gonna be interviewing.
Yeah, well, I do know that I was aware of it before Monday because I was informed by someone that it was going to take place, not by, not through any official capacity, but a friend of mine who's on the Silver Service Board, informed me that the interviews were gonna take place at ten o'clock.
Are they supposed to be talking to you?
No, they're not supposed to be talking.
Well, I'm a citizen of Gaston, so they have a right to talk to me as far as a citizen's concerned.
Let me ask this question, then. Let me ask this question.
And it was in the newspaper on Saturday, ten o'clock and three o'clock.
Let me, let me, let me ask this question, then. What did you get officially in writing as to when the meeting was gonna be?
Well, there was nothing official given to any of us.
Yeah, it was. I got an email for one o'clock. And I also got the letter from the Silver Service Secretary or the board, whoever, that it was gonna be one o'clock. Now, when did the clerk office get notified that it was, it had changed? Who was notified?
I didn't receive an official notification.
That it had been changed? What I'm getting, I got a text from the clerk's office at ten oh two, and it's still in my phone. Unfortunately, I don't take the Gaston time because I can't read, so I don't need to take the paper. But I have a problem when people don't notify elected officials when things have changed. The newspaper is not the way you notify me. The way you notify me is plain and simple. You send out notices to the council of the scheduled meeting, to the clerk's office, and you contact the clerk's office. And I have a serious problem with something that serious to select a police chief. And by the way, that was the biggest joke, the biggest circus I've ever seen in my life, sitting here yesterday, going through that process. They interviewed six people. Six people. Very good candidates, six very good candidates. And it took them less than an hour to go down and discuss all six of them and come back with a decision. That's the biggest joke in the world. Biggest joke in the world. And then you have the audacity not to notify the council that the time had been changed. You can't let me, leave it up to me to read the newspaper or to let me accidentally, there's a clerk's office. The newspaper had to get it on Friday if they put it in Saturday's paper, so why didn't the clerk's office get it on Friday? There's just too many things happening and too many things going on that I have a problem with. And with that whole process that took place yesterday. I don't know anything about this individual. He might be one of the best chiefs we've ever had. I just don't like the way the process went. Anytime the process is bad, only bad things can happen as a result of it. Mark my word, whatever the day is, February or whatever, we'll just see what happens down the road. Again, I just wanted to state my objections to how this process went down and the fact that none of us was officially notified on last Friday when they notified the newspaper that the time had changed. I have a problem with that.
Mr. President, let me say something real quick. You know, and I think regardless as to how you feel about, you know, what Mr. Avery has just stated, I think the consensus amongst the majority of this council is that we all have some concerns about the process. And I think me in particular, I have a concern relative to the tremendous irony between some of the rumors that we heard regarding who might be selected and then, of course, the final selection. You know, just kinda really begs to question the process. And Mr. Avery has used the word "process" a number of times. So it's an opportunity, and we've said about all we can say about it from these seats. Those of you in the community who have concerns about that process as well need to speak up and say it. And maybe our elected officials will hear it. But that's, you know, we're making a case because our constituents are making that case to us, and we're making the case to the public as best we can. So again, there's some strong concerns about that process.
Does anybody else have anything else?
I've been amazed at the citizens, and I was talking to a schoolteacher yesterday. Had no earthly idea about the Silver Service Board, how it's created and how it functions. Had no idea. And I don't think anything will ever change until the citizens in Gaston realize that we're the only city in the state that has this Silver Service Board that hires, fires, and dispenses our police and fire department. So when you call the councilman or the mayor to complain about a police issue, you called the wrong person. We have no input whatsoever into that department, or very, very little. And I don't think, I don't think citizens realize that. I don't, I know I talked, like I said, I talked to a schoolteacher yesterday, very educated lady. Had no earthly idea of how the system works. So I think if enough citizens realize the process, it'll be changed.
I think so, too.
And only our legislatures can change this. We have no power to do this. So you need to be talking with your legislatures.
Yeah, well, I think the process has gone through. It happens to be state law. I don't know that I was totally happy. But we need to get now down to backing the person that's going in until this process is changed or whatever we need to do there. But we do need to, for the sake and success for our Gaston Police Department, we need to get behind them. And we don't need to be quibbling right now about the process. That can come along and can be handled. But please, let's get behind our Gaston Police Force under the direction of the new chief and go from there, please.
Mr. President, I thank you, Ben, and thank you, Robert, and Councilman Williams. I, too. I was here for the whole interview process yesterday, and I was kind of amazed that they had four interviews yesterday morning, and then we came back at three o'clock and they had two more. Well, immediately upon the first interview that was done, they went into executive session after interviewing one candidate, and then went into executive session after interviewing the second candidate that evening, but had not, I just found this kind of interesting, and I'm not making any accusations or anything else, but I found it kinda interesting that no one, they did not go into executive session on either of the four candidates that they had interviewed during that morning. So, you know, whether there's something to that or not, whether they knew in those, the process, you know, and the communications lines that were not there, they still aren't there. You know, your council has been very vociferous about the fact and about the process and how the Silver Service Board operates and who nominates the Silver Service Board or who elects or who appoints or whatever. But we've been very, very vocal on that issue because we don't think it's right. We think that the process should change, but we can't make it, we can't change it. We can't make a change. Your legislators are the only ones that can do that. So, you know, you've got to be very, very, very tenacious about, be talking to them about what you want your city to be, how you want your city to be, Ron. And the second thing is, I made this statement, too, that, you know, maybe things did not go. The person that may have been selected may not be everybody's first choice. But I have to think, and I'm gonna give the Silver Service Board this much. I'm gonna have to say, since they've made that decision, that as far as we're concerned, we all know who we want and who we like. But they've made the choice for us, and they named the person who's gonna be our police chief. Now, I made this statement that this council will offer the olive branch to the new police chief, and we will hope that he will reciprocate so that we can have the type of working relationship that we've all strived for here in the city. So we will do everything we can to work with the new police chief, and we expect that he will do the same thing with us. We know that there were four other great candidates, five other great candidates there. And like I said, it's a sad thing that somebody had to be chosen among those six, you know. Doesn't indicate that that person is any better than the other four candidates or five candidates, but it's the one that the Silver Service Board sought for to put into that position. And we will support that person a hundred percent as a council and as a city.
The last time I extended the olive branch to the last two police chiefs from out of town, I still got the Dern olive branch that is broke. Make a motion with adjourn.
I got something for, I got something for we adjourn.
I'm sorry.
You know, someone always makes an impression in your life. Seems like sometimes you're down and out, and someone's always there to try to pick you up. A dear friend of mine, Amanda Goan, she passed away Sunday, and she would always call me. Seemed like she'd always call at the right time. She never wanted hardly anything. She just always wanted to just talk to me about the community and the neighborhood. And I just want to say our hearts and thoughts and prayers go out with Amanda Goan's family.
Amen to that.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
We adjourn.